All right, well, good evening and welcome to the June 5th City Council Meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Bettin?
Here.
Councilor Brooke?
Here.
Councilor White?
Here.
Mayor Protim Yousaf?
Here.
Mayor Marbury?
Here. Well, thank you, there are no proclamations tonight, so I'm going to begin right with the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered non-controversial and routine matters, and there will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed. And certainly, if you would like an item removed, please contact your city councilors. May I have the consent agenda, please?
Item 4.1 through 4.3 are approval of minutes. 4.1, the minutes from the regular meeting of May 1st, 2018. 4.2, the minutes from the study session of May 8th, 2018. 4.3, the minutes from the regular meeting of May 15th, 2018. Items 4.4 through 4.9 are discussion and possible action items. 4.4 concerns approval of resolution R.2018-17 authorizing an additional appropriation to the general fund for the Colorado Department of Law post grant and proposed project cost in excess of the amount budgeted in the 2018 budget. 4.5 concerns resolution R.2018-18 authorizing an additional appropriation to the general fund for the National Endowment for the Arts grant. 4.6 concerns resolution R.2018-19 accepting the Escalante Village annexation petition and setting a public hearing for the annexation, initial zoning, and conceptual development plan for July 17th, 2018. 4.7 concerns resolution R.2018-20 authorizing an additional appropriation to the general fund for a 2017 quarterly payment to the Durango area tourism office in excess of the amount budgeted in the 2018 budget. Item 4.8 concerns resolution R.2018-21 adopting the city council goals and top five policy priorities for 2018 through 2019. 4.9 concerns resolution R.2018-22 appointing Mayor Protim Melissa Yousaf and city manager, Ron LeBlanc, to represent the city of Durango on the board of the Southwest Colorado Council of Governments. Items 4.10 through 4.12 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of June 18th, 2018. 4.10 is to consider the Bodo Business Ranch, Unit 3, Lot 6A through 1A, parcel 1 minor subdivision. Item 4.11 is to consider the River Oaks duplex townhomes amended preliminary plat. 4.12 is to consider the Southport Storage Lot 4, minor subdivision, preliminary plat. And item 4.13 is final approval of ordinance O.2018-11 amending section 17-60 of the Code of Ordinances related to pedestrian safety and access to sidewalks and public right-of-way in the downtown business area of the city and declaring an effective date.
Thank you very much. I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as recited.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Our roll call, please.
Councilor Bettin?
Yes.
Councilor Brooke?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And now we'll move to public participation. So, Mr. LeBlanc, if you'll get the sign-in sheet for me, thank you. Public participation is set aside for people to provide comments or ask questions that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. City council will not be able to respond to all of those questions from the dais, but citizens should address their comments from the podium, state your name and address, and talk to the city council. We ask that you sign in before. Mr. LeBlanc has the sign-in sheet, thank you very much. The mayor will call you up. You have three minutes to speak, and he'll let you know if there's about a 30-second window left. Any audiovisual materials must be provided to the city clerk on or before noon of the day of the meeting. Okay, we'll begin with Greg Hope, please. Mr. Hope?
I have another four other names ahead of me.
The mayor gets to make decisions, Mr. Hope. We haven't seen you in a long time as a former city staff member, so it's always a pleasure to see you.
Why, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I hope to discuss two things with you. The new mayor, new rules article, and the three-minute editorial. I'm going to try and get through this in three minutes. I'll be curious if I fail, what are you going to do?
We'll stop you.
You're going to throw me out?
No, we'll just ask you to conclude your remarks.
When am I going?
Let's go, Mr. Hope.
Okay, so here we go. While there's no offense intended in what I have to say to them, I'm sure some of you may take offense to it, but I'm just going to ask you for your forbearance. With respect to these new rules, I wanted to point out to you that limiting public comment to three minutes is not a new rule. The city council of 1997 to 2001 tried to do that, and in fact, they used to post little clocks up there, and the little switches were over here, and you start the people talking, and they can see how fast it goes. But guess what? It didn't work, and the council stopped doing it. And one was inconsistency. I mean, forgetting to flip the switch every time somebody gets up isn't... It did happen, and moreover, there was a lack of enforcement. Like, people would run over in seven minutes, and people would go, "Well, what are you going to do?" And the council didn't enforce their own rules. So, while I understand why city council might want to limit public comments regarding public legislative issues, like, do you allow people to sit on the sidewalks or lay on the sidewalks, you know? No individual property owner per se is involved like a quasi-judicial hearing, but there are many reasons, I believe, why limiting public comment to three minutes on quasi-judicial hearings is short-sighted, sort of arrogant, and dangerous. And the reason why is that quasi-judicial hearings are not the type of procedure city council should be restricting public comment in. If you do, you run the risk of an abrogation of due process under the fifth minute, and one of the tenets of which is that everyone has a right to be heard. That's an absolute right. And historically, city council should know by now that many citizens are unaccustomed to... Oh, wow! Are unaccustomed to and even fearful of speaking publicly. Speaking in front of many strangers can be intimidating, but if it takes someone a bit longer to express themselves, the council should empathize and not intimidate by demanding comment in three minutes or less. With respect to enforcement of this rule, I consider it an error to demand that the city manager be the enforcer. I think he's got enough on his plate, and I think it's unfair to place that burden on him.
Mr. Hope, could you wrap it up?
I'm wrapping it up right here, right here. I can't count the number of times when the council... Oh, so what can you do to be more efficient in your meetings and accommodate public comment? I know this is really unpopular, but I think there are too many times where I sat in this audience with a room full of people who wanted to talk about a controversial quasi-judicial land use issue, and the council would spend a full hour or more on its reports and comments. I've always found that to be an insult to those who were in the room, where you would spend that time to talk about the meetings you went to with these things you want to introduce, when there's a whole room full of people who wanted to talk to you, and then to sit until 8:30 or 9 o'clock to be able to be heard. I really think that you should first keep that section of the agenda towards the end and always prioritize your quasi-judicial public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Hope.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker, Dave Peters, please.
Good evening, city council members, members of the public. My name is David Peters, resident of the city of Durango.
Could you give your address, please, Mr. Peters?
10 Inabek Court. So, I'll make it short tonight. You know, the revenue and expense, past history and forecast for the city has definitely become a topic of public interest, given there are certainly substantive talks of new taxes maybe on the ballot this fall. So, accordingly, I decided to review the past five years of financial history to see what the trends are. Interestingly, online, I found all the information, except for the month of December 2017. I note that monthly financial reports resumed beginning... resumed being provided to the public starting in January as required by the city charter. I also note that there was a public information request or core request for the December 2017 unopted financials that was denied citing the information didn't exist. I find this curious, given that you must have December financial information to give to the auditors. Further, a subsequent request for December financials was denied citing work product. Certainly, with some legal background, that terminology leads to questions, and it raises a lot of questions from the public's perspective. You know, just in general, that's... You know, financials is something that really the public should demand transparency. Asking for December financials is not excessive. I just find the lack of transparency on this is disappointing. On another subject, after reviewing the city's history on revenue and expenses, my conclusion is the city doesn't have a revenue problem, it has a spending problem. Several past years showed double-digit year-on-year spending increases. I just can't imagine voters approving tax increases until such time that the city can demonstrate better control on spending. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Simpson, please.
Mayor Marbury, John Simpson, 1831 Cresview Drive. Purpose of my speech is to discuss the shortfalls of the capital improvement plan and start the discussion that tax increases not yet justified. During a recent study session, the unfunded portions of the capital projects was questioned. This is the orange and red portions in the Engage graph. Although it's a good question, a question that should have preceded that question, what are the funded projects that are at the blue lines? I have heard about the financial awards the city receives. I would help the city follow the capital planning best practices outlined by the Government Finance Officials Association, GFOA, which says the capital process includes an assessment of the government's fiscal capacity so that the capital improvement plan is based on what can realistically be funded. If the capital improvement plan that you approved as part of the budget follows GFOA, then the blue hairs... the blue bars on the graph, what logic could be taken from the capital improvement plan? This is how the Engage graph compares the capital improvement plan. The green line is from the capital improvement plan, the blue bars are from Engage. This is markedly different prediction of what will be funded when compared with the capital improvement plan to the Engage plan. Why not use the capital improvement plan that was approved just months before the Engage effort started? To communicate properly, there can only be one set of numbers. Transparency demands you know where the Engage numbers came from. Government best practices would say these numbers come from the capital improvement plan. Furthermore, the question which starts this whole discussion is what has been previously funded that we need to complete? In February, city staff increased the capital fund budget from 14 million to 93 million. I repeat, 93 million. Do staff think they can complete $93 million worth of projects in 2018? Many of these in the general fund. You should insist that staff provide a list of these projects that includes completion dates so they can be incorporated into the Engage planning. The backlog of funded capital projects are causing problems. For example, staff is too busy completing the sewer plant to contract water and sewer rate study. There's $93 million worth of projects to be completed. The sewer plant is just a portion of the problem. How will all of these projects be completed? The solution is to follow Folders' capital planning process. For every project, it shows what was spent in the past to realistically be funded, what are the unfunded needs, what are the future needs. Once a transparent and easy-to-follow capital improvement plan is developed, then come to the voters and ask for a tax increase. City staff might be right that a tax increase is needed, but you must demand a complete capital improvement plan before asking us to pay more. If there was a thorough capital improvement plan, then Melissa could have a clear answer about her future projects, Dick and Sweetie would have answers to carryover projects, and I wouldn't have questions about where the funded portion of the Engage graph came from. The answer to all these questions would be the same: book in the capital improvement plan. Madam Mayor.
Would you do us a favor? Would you email us your PowerPoint to the city council?
Of course.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Mr. Webb? Lou Webb?
Sir Mike?
It's above your head. If you would just say your address, please, Mr. Webb.
My name is Lou Webb, 14688 County Road 240 in Durango. I am the current president of the La Plata Liberty Coalition, and I want to tag on to a little bit of what Mr. Peters was talking about, not having... We have a spending problem, not an income problem. And this is kind of typical of government. Spending is what government does. We can tax and tax and tax and tax, and no matter how much government taxes and takes in, they spend it all and want more. And I just want you to know that as a coalition, we're watching this as well. Town folks have input into the county. This is our main town. Us rural folks have input into the town, and we're watching. And just spend our money wisely. Please don't ask for more. Spend better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb, just a quick question. Have you been to any of the community engagement meetings that the city has had?
Not for a while. I've been kind of engaged in county issues.
I see. Well, we've had a very robust engagement program going on.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I would suggest that maybe you go online and look, as well as... There's another meeting, I believe, June 25th, if you would like to come and hear the actual physical information that's presented and not just rumors that you might have heard.
Okay, I would be there.
All right. Thank you so kindly.
I'll be there on the 25th.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Let's see. Susan Smith, please.
My name is Susan Smith. My address is 1743 County Road 203. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I would like to ask the city council to revisit the sewer rate increase for county residents. My sewer cost from May 2017 to May of 2018 was a total of $3,716. That averages $310 per month. My sewer bill by far is the highest utility I have. We have done everything in our power to reduce our water usage for a lower sewer bill. We have checked for leaks, replaced toilets, taken fewer showers, we collect water for flushing toilets, purchased water containers to pick up water from miles away, go to the rec center to shower, barely use any water for dishes, putting buckets out to collect rainwater, snow, and on and on. I developed a higher awareness of how to decrease our water consumption, but I don't believe it is fair for us to do this every year during the months you calculate our bill for sewer. We got our new rate down from $310 a month to $120.68 a month. This is still very high. Now that there is a year's worth of a double rate for the county resident sewer bills, the question is, are you covering costs of sewer services or are you making a profit from the county residents? What is the actual cost versus what has been collected this past year? I'm asking the city to reduce the multiplier rate for county residents to 1.5 instead of double the cost of the city rate. I'm doing my part to decrease water usage and my sewer rate. Will you please do your part to ease the burden on county residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And that concludes everyone for public participation. Councilors? Any... You can comment if you want to.
Just going to see if staff wanted to comment regarding some of the comments were made, or if it's more appropriate we just respond in writing.
I don't feel responding would create a debate that...
Correct.
It's probably unwarranted. The facts speak for themselves.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the councilors? Then I'll ask for council reports and actions.
Yeah, I wanted to just address, in my reports and actions, the issue that's been bandied about a little bit regarding the change in our procedures relative to time for public participation that Mr. Hope brought up this evening. Our mayor has taken a little bit of heat on this in the paper and other venues, and it's not necessarily fair since it actually wasn't her idea, it was just a council decision that was made at the retreat this spring. We go through an annual retreat, and we have a facilitator come in from the Colorado Municipal to facilitate that retreat, and we try to learn what the best practices are throughout the state. One of the things that came up in that retreat was that we were, I think, the only community in the state that that facilitator was aware of that still had a five-minute rule in place, and it was suggested that shortening that time would enable more speakers to speak on nights where this room is full, and also run a more efficient meeting, keep folks focused on what their key points are, and not make people wait that may have to leave and go somewhere else if they're here for other things than the highly controversial issue at hand on that particular given evening. And I think it was my idea to change it, so I just want to take that off your shoulders a little bit.
Thank you.
And we all agreed that that would be a good idea. I think it's a moving target. So far, I've thought it went really well. I noticed this evening that almost every speaker, except for Mr. Hope who made the point, was able to finish their comments within two minutes, and they were all pointed and exacting. So, we'll see how it goes. We'll certainly reevaluate it at the end of the next year. And the other thing I wanted to mention, the paper made mention of signing up, and I'm sure that the mayor would allow folks to sign up if they came in late. We just want to have a way to call folks up and move the meeting along. That's the purpose of the sign-up, so that's all I have.
Thank you, counselor. Mayor Protim?
I would agree with Counselor Bettin that it was definitely... most definitely a group decision. All of us were in agreement that we needed to streamline our meetings and make them more efficient and well-organized. I brought to the table, too, past experience from nine-hour boardwork. That was the way it was always done in my experience with them. It worked well when you would have a room full of people to have people come up and be focused and organized and present accordingly, so it seemed to work well. But I did think that Mr. Hope brought up an interesting point about being conscientious about our mayor's reports and action... or our council reports and actions, and/or potentially discussing moving that if there's an opportunity, if we have a room full of people...
No, I like that.
I thought that that was a really good point.
We sure can talk about that, yes.
So, that was the only other thing. And then, did you want me to speak on our reports and actions now?
Yes.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, we did... I did attend the CML in Pagosa Springs with Counselor White and Mayor Marbury. This is the Colorado Municipal League. It was an opportunity for various municipalities to get together and talk about local issues. It was a great discussion. The one thing that we all, I think, brought home from that was the possibility of a discussion around a statewide ballot for a transportation tax increase. So, that was discussed and bantered about mostly in that discussion, but it was a good trip to Pagosa Springs and nice to coordinate with the other municipalities.
Thank you. Counselor Brooke?
I just want to echo the bit about the sign-ups as well as the three minutes. I mean, we... The overall concept that we've brought forward in our discussions is an intent to allow more public access and to allow a broader spectrum of people to talk in a concise manner and not waste everybody's time going on and on and on about the same topic. And it's happened to us a couple of times in the past few months, and it was prompted that prompted our discussion. And I think it works well. If we don't want to have to continue on some of these controversial items into another meeting, which is what we're supposed to do at 9:30, is end our meeting or have a motion to continue the meeting either into the night or into another session. So, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is be efficient.
All right, thank you. Counselor White?
I would echo the same. I'm reminded of the hearing when we were talking about, I believe it was the emergency ordinance, where we literally got to the 11th hour before the council was able to come to a vote. And in a number of these meetings, there has been business to be done after the hearings. And so, I think the goal here is, especially with a controversial issue when many people want to speak, is to keep things moving along. I did resonate to Mr. Hope's remark about judicial hearings, which is something perhaps the council...
They talked about it.
...would like to revisit. That said, I do have a couple of reports. The... I will be very brief, just say there's some really wonderful things that go on in this community from week to week, and I've tried to highlight some of the ones that I've attended. In the last three weeks since our last meeting, they include the law enforcement parade and memorial service, the adults education center graduation, which is always impressive to get a glimpse of the obstacles that students have overcome to reach that milestone in their lives. I believe the mayor will probably talk about the softball complex dedication, and I want to mention that on Sunday, I attended the events in Buckley Park for Gun Violence Awareness Day. There were many moving stories that people told about the impacts of gun violence in their lives. There were also many ideas shared about how to improve gun safety and school safety without impinging on the Second Amendment rights of everyone. Coming up, ballots are going out today for the primary election. Unless you have already... If you are unaffiliated and have not already expressed a preference to the county clerk, you will receive two ballots. You may only cast one of them. If you cast... Try to cast both ballots, they both will be invalid. So, the deadline for returning those to the county clerk is June 26th, and I do urge everyone to vote. That is the most fundamental right we have as voters. And I will just reiterate that the next community engagement forum is on June 25th. It will include presentation of a scientific survey of the populace that is being conducted this month about attitudes of people towards city services and expenses and possible revenue increases. That's going to be a very important meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Mr. LeBlanc for our sales tax report, since the wheels around here for projects really are based on the revenue that comes in. Certainly, there are some grants that come into the city, but it's really the sales tax revenue that makes all the capital projects, for the most part, and the general revenue move. Mr. LeBlanc?
Thank you, Mayor Marbury. The numbers I'm going to read are not final, but I wanted to present those to the council in light of some other factors related to the fire and economic impacts of the fire, just to put things in perspective. So, the sales tax report for this month, sales tax was up 6%. That brings the year-to-date to 3.2%. The lodgers tax was up 10.9%, but I do not have lodgers year-to-date. I should have that in a few days.
And would you clarify what month you're talking about?
Let's see. That would be for the month of May.
May, okay. May, okay. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, councillor White referred to the softball complex, uh, Fort Lewis, with dedication, maybe you saw it in the paper. Uh, councillor Brooke and councillor White were, uh, was also there, and Dean Thomas spoke, so we were happy to see the softball complex open up. Um, and we're gonna move right in...
Yeah, I'm the first pitch, by the way.
Oh, yes, that's right. Okay, did my best. Let's move into legislative and policy hearings.
Mayor Marbury, ahead of...
Oh, oh, yes, sir, I'm so sorry. Click, click. You had a PowerPoint.
I do, let's just slide. And I'll pass out a, handout in a, in just a minute. Um, but I was asked by the mayor to, uh, present, uh, some information on what we're doing with respect to drought management and fire mitigation. Um, and I'd like to start off this presentation by relating to the concept of good planning. And I would start with a little history. Uh, in, I think, 1904, Congress approved the transfer of about 3,100 acres of land to the mayor of Durango, uh, which is where our city reservoir is, and it's now located in the middle of the Wimanooch Wilderness Area. Previous city councils have acquired senior water rights on the Florida River. Previous city councils secured additional water rights on the Anamis River. All these are measures of good planning. We have a comprehensive plan that, um, makes land use decisions based on what we can support in terms of factors like traffic, water, and wastewater. All developments within the city are required to connect to the municipal water system. Voters approved a $6.1 million bond for storage in Lake Nighthorse, and the amount of water that we store there is, I believe, greater than the amount of water we currently take out of the two rivers. Another measure of good planning. We manage our system well. Uh, we also share our system with our neighbors that live outside the city limits. We've issued over 1,200 cards to operate the water dock. We also, uh, among those, um, 1,200 cards, there are four cards that allow commercial water users to access that water, that they can then transfer and sell to people outside the city limits. To my knowledge, no one who uses the water dock lives within the city limits. We serve over 200 water customers out of the city limits. The water dock history is also noteworthy, and I think important for, um, the public to be reminded. It used to be located at Chapman Hill, and when we rebuilt Florida Road, uh, we had to shut that down and relocate it to its present location. Since nobody in the city, uh, got water out of it, we asked the Board of County Commissioners, the previous board, not the incumbents that are in there today, would they consider funding that? And they said, no, they're not in the water business. There are other water providers, like the Anamis Water Company, Edgemont Highlands, and Purgatory, that all have water that they treat, uh, for their customers, just like we have water that we treat for our customers. There are other golf courses in addition to Hillcrest. Uh, there's Dalton Ranch and Glacier Club. The reason I'm mentioning all of this is I'm sure the council gets questions in the line at the supermarket or in the post office, or telephone calls and emails about why are we doing what we're doing? Uh, so that gives you a little perspective. We follow the principles of good planning. There were some other factors that went into the decision to, uh, how we're gonna distribute water and how we're gonna save water. Uh, one of those factors is the ease and efficiency of implementing water restrictions. And I think the city council understands that currently with the fire, 416 fire, we are stretched in terms of our staff. We support the county. The county's the lead agency, working with the Forest Service, uh, but we provide staffing, uh, in the, uh, Emergency Operations Center, and we staff certain positions under the incident command system. We're happy to do that. We're partners with the county. We are one community after all. So we don't have extra people sitting around that we can send around neighborhoods to say, uh, one neighbor is, uh, watering their lawn on the wrong day. Maybe they're on an even day and they were watering on the wrong day. That's not very efficient, nor does it make for good neighbors and good relationships. And again, our residents should benefit from good planning. So our approach and what is up on the board reflects what is being recommended and implemented for both water conservation measures and, uh, fire, uh, mitigation. Um, let's start with, um, the fire danger, for example. Uh, I know the council received calls and emails, uh, is the city going on stage one? Is the city gonna follow stage two? We adopted, the council adopted, the fire code. The fire code in the city limits is very strict. We do not allow open burning. We do not allow discharge of firearms. We do not allow fireworks at any time. What is different here now that's being implemented is a no-smoking ban in parks and open spaces, which the city manager has the authority to do. Those signs were posted, as I notified the council, probably 10 days ago. They were posted at all trailheads. We're also advising, uh, restrictions on backyard barbecues. Um, the use of charcoal will be, um, banned. Uh, we can still have, uh, grill, uh, operating, uh, with, uh, uh, gas, uh, but we're not gonna allow any wood burning and braziers or fire pits, fire rings, or charcoal.
Okay.
And that's consistent with what we do in the parks. Those measures will help reduce the fire danger within the city limits. It also brings a little more attention to and consistency with what's going on with our neighbors in the county with stage-two restrictions. Um, the fire department that we contract with is responsible for enforcement of the fire code. With this fire, there's priorities. They aren't available to come around and check whether you're using charcoal in your backyard or whether your grill is 15 feet from your house. I would hope that the residents of Durango would use common sense and judgment in making those decisions, uh, in their homes. Excuse me. So with respect to water conservation measures, we've taken a different route than might have been expected, um, by the public. Uh, and some of this was informed by the Gold King Mines Bill. And if you recall during Gold King, we were unable to take water out of the Anamis, uh, and we had a public concern that that water may not have been safe. So we decided to implement conservation measures, and we asked the community to cut back. Uh, but at the same time that we asked the community to cut back, we specifically addressed the four largest irrigators within the city limits, and those are noted up here on the board. Uh, they would be the Parson Rec Department, Hillcrest Golf Course, um, Fort Lewis College, and Durango 9R School District. When we reexamine what we achieved during Gold King, the vast majority of the savings and conservation measures were achieved by those four agencies. We have been implementing cutbacks for several days now, uh, among those four agencies. Uh, we also would like to, uh, inform the public, they don't need to water as much at their house. Uh, if they have questions about plants and lawns, uh, the general rule of thumb is you can skip a day, you can skip a cycle on your, a zone on your, um, irrigation system. Uh, all those things help in the long run. But if those four agencies cut back, and the next six, so if we do the top 10, we can save about a million gallons a day. There are other factors here that aren't quite evident for the public. For example, our storage requirement at the terminal reservoir. Depending on the time of year, we may have anywhere between seven to 14 days of storage, and that's a factor of how much are we using a day. So if we cut back 10%, that's a good thing. The water we get from the Florida River, uh, is a very high priority, and it has nothing to do with Lemon Reservoir, how full it is or how empty it is. It comes out of the city reservoir right that was originally obtained, that I referred to earlier, I believe, in, uh, 1904 thereabouts. So we're only entitled to what comes down through that watershed, uh, and it passes through the dam, uh, down in the river, then we have a, a place to take it out of the river. Um, it really doesn't relate to the storage. We don't have storage at Lemon. We have storage at Lake Nighthorse, but we don't have a way to take the, uh, water out at the present moment. And we have pumping capability on the Anamis. So on a daily basis, we assess the flow on the Florida and try to use as what we're entitled to, and then we supplement that with the Anamis River water. And that water is all collected at the terminal reservoir, and our water treatment staff process that water to keep our various, uh, storage tanks full. So when you're sleeping tonight, those tanks will be filling, so when you wake up in the morning, you can take your shower, make your coffee, and, uh, whatever else you do, brush your teeth, I guess. But it's the limiting factor of the terminal reservoir that causes us, um, to, to do it this way. Uh, we think that our citizens are benefiting from the planning that has gone on for over 100 years. They're benefiting from the wise decisions, uh, that this council and previous councils have made over the years regarding water supply. We have a very good water supply. We have a 60-year-old treatment plant, and we have some infrastructure, some water appurtenances that need to be upgraded, repaired, and, um, improved. So some, sometimes we have to look internally to save water, and I've asked all of our city departments to do what they can to economize the use of water, and that is ongoing now. Uh, you'll see buses and police cars that aren't washed every day. Uh, you'll see some other operational, uh, issues that we won't be using as much water as we normally would. But specifically with parks, uh, there will be a time, excuse me, where we will not irrigate certain parks. Right now, I think we're irrigating everything except Schneider Park, and I'd like to say that was part of this plan. The reason we're not irrigating Schneider is the, the line is broke. Uh, and, uh, uh, it'll be repaired when the, when the water level in the river goes down, uh, but parks that are passive will be gradually cut off irrigation. We will maintain new plantings, new trees, and we'll also continue to irrigate the ball fields that get a lot of use. And since we operate some of the ball fields on 9R property, uh, we will continue that management effort on those facilities as well. There's a lot of information an individual property owner can obtain by going online in terms of their own property. Uh, one of the incentives to take a look at your property is the fact that water rates have gone up, uh, over 200%. Uh, the, I think the trend of having, uh, bluegrass lines, uh, all around your house, uh, is not the future we're gonna live in. We're gonna have to think about how we use water for landscaping. In round numbers, uh, during the winter, I think we treat about 3 million gallons a day. Uh, in the summer, it's 10 million plus. Is that right, Lee Black?
Uh, it's between 5 and 10.
So 10 would be a, a maximum day. This current situation, um, causes us concern, uh, with the fire and with the drought. This drought is not going to be solved by the monsoons if they come in July. Uh, the monsoons, uh, will probably cause some flooding and create other hazards that we're gonna have to deal with. But to recharge the aquifers, uh, outside the city limits, uh, that's a multi-year process. Um, I don't understand, uh, the mechanics of that, uh, but I do know that we didn't get here overnight, and we're not gonna get out of this drought overnight. So I would ask that citizens, uh, do the best they can in managing their own water use at their homes. The utilities department has information it will share with commercial customers, uh, that will guide them and maybe, um, save additional, um, to that million for the top 10. There are other things they can do. Elaborate landscapes for commercial, uh, properties could be, uh, terminated in terms of the, uh, irrigation. But this outline, uh, is basically, uh, designed for us to adjust as we go forward. And we're gonna look two weeks out. We're gonna look at weather forecasts. We're gonna look at what, uh, we're hearing back from the community, uh, and we're gonna make adjustments as needed. So if there are calls to the council that, uh, one particular park is turning brown, um, I think you'll know that's the park we're saving irrigation on. Uh, we've used water up to this point in time, uh, to establish the, uh, the grass and to keep things going, uh, but if there's a, uh, continuation of, of this drought before the monsoons, we'll continue to shut off irrigation to other parks. Uh, we've asked the other agencies here, uh, including the golf course, to cut back, uh, and all four have expressed a willingness to cooperate, so I don't anticipate any issue. Uh, I would clarify on that million gallons, that's a estimate. Uh, some of that is treated, some of that is untreated because we've supplied untreated water to the golf course, and then that water also is used for like the Smith Complex and other parts of, uh, Fort Lewis campus. We also have untreated water, uh, that comes out of the Anamis that we use for the cemetery and, um, a couple of the parks, I don't remember specifically which ones. So you just have to bear with us. Uh, we will be adjusting as conditions change. I will tell you that the fire is a concern. Uh, it's not a concern to our water supply, um, but it is a concern to our economy, and I suspect we'll be discussing, um, some changes to our operations to adjust, uh, for this economy. The train hasn't run in a, in quite a few days. I'm not sure, wouldn't it be operational again? Uh, but this time of year, that is the generator of visitation to the community. And we're all in this together, and we have great support with our county staff, uh, compatriots, and state and federal agencies have been very good, uh, so far. Uh, they're concentrating on managing that fire, and tomorrow we start measuring and evaluating the economic impact, so I'm sure we'll be reporting back to council as the situation progresses. So, subject to your questions, that is my report.
Any questions, councillor? Uh, I don't, we don't have any at this time. Thank you very much. Uh, I would like to comment that the fire department had asked for donations on Saturday, and that our community responded so overwhelmingly that it just makes your heart feel good. So the firefighters are in good shape with all the supplies that the entire community sent out to Bodo, and it's being distributed. So bless you all and bless the firefighters. We all have friends who are impacted. Hmm, we all have friends who are impacted. We all know people who are suffering right now that are out of their houses. So, it just makes you feel good that we are so lucky to have the bombers overhead, the helicopters going into Shalona Lake, you know, all those firefighters. We are so blessed. Legislative hearing, okay. Public hearing to consider an ordinance granting an easement over a portion of city-owned property to La Plata Electric Association to install a new service on 1111 Camino de Rio. And I'll have a staff.
I'll take this one.
All right, thank you.
As you may recall, this was set for a prior hearing, which continued, so we're still working out some of the details of this easement, but primarily, this is an easement on the west side of the river to upgrade service that will benefit the new hotel, but will also benefit other users. There are a few fine, again, fine-tuning details here, but there's a map in your packet that shows that this easement will run, again, along the west side of the river, and will be attached to the bridge across the river. We have engineering reports that detail that the bridge will indeed support an additional cable. And so, again, this, while on the surface, this benefits primarily 1111 Camino del Rio, the new hotel, there are other benefits to other entities, including the city. There's pumping plants and so forth over there. So it's my recommendation that we grant this easement per the recommendation in the documentation.
Thank you. There's an opportunity for public testimony, but no one signed up, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any questions by council? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion by council.
I would move that we direct city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading at the next regularly city council meeting, authorizing, granting the proposed easement to LPEA to install new service to 1111 Camino del Rio.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes, thank you. The next 9.1.2 is a public hearing regarding an amendment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango repealing Section 1554-F of the Code related to limits on jury trials in a municipal court.
Yes, this one is also pretty straightforward, actually. This was, there was a recent case in Boulder County that clarified some rules on when jury trials were allowed in municipal court. We had a code section that was in conflict with that new ruling. This simply repeals the prior limits in our code on jury trials, which in effect allows anyone in municipal court to request and have a jury trial if they so desire. This has actually been in practical effect for quite some time. We've been allowing for jury trials, and just so the council knows, we really have not seen any significant increase in requests, but this does bring our code in alignment with the current state of the law, and I would recommend that we adopt this ordinance to repeal that section that was in conflict with the recent court case.
Thank you. There's, no one has signed up for that public testimony, so I will ask for, are there any questions by council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion by council.
I'll make a motion to ask the, direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting on an ordinance repealing Section 15-54-F of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango related to limits on jury trials in municipal court.
I'll second that. Thank you. Roll call, please. Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes. Moving on to 11.1, this is an introduction of ordinances and ordinance amending Section 2371 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purposes of making that section consistent with the ballot language approved by voters in 2015, extending and amending the one-half cent sales tax originally approved in 1999 and declaring an effective date. Mr. Nelson?
Um, I believe I don't have much to add. This again springs the code in compliance with the ballot language. When the original half cent was approved, it was a fund set up. All this does is change the name of the fund, make it consistent with the expenditure purposes, and change the sunset on that. So I don't have anything else to add other than...
All right, and what ordinance number is?
This is 2018-12.
All right, I'll look for a motion from council.
I move we approve ordinance 2018-12.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call. Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
Moving on to 12.1, is a discussion on possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to determine matters relating to potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property within the City of Durango as permitted in CRS 2464024A. Is there a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to convene an executive session to discuss matters relating to potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property within the City of Durango as permitted in CRS 24-6-402...
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes. When we, when we adjourn into executive session, there is another 12.2.2, which is also another executive session, so this effectively concludes the city council's hearings for June the 5th. Thank you so much. Be safe out there.